So we'll make a start. Mr. Menne, can I pass yourself to make the statement you need to make?
Thank you, convener. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's Children, Families and Communities Committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act two thousand and three. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being livestreamed. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. As indicated, I'll now take a roll call for the minute and ask that members confirm their presence when I call their needs. Convener?
I'm here.
Councillor Alexander?
I'm also here.
Councillor Anderson?
Evening.
Lord Profess Campbell?
Present.
Deputy Lord Profess Cordell?
Present.
Bailey Dawson?
I'm here.
Councillor Alnackla?
Present.
Councillor Flynn?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Lynn?
Present.
Bailey Roberts?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome?
Good evening, present.
Bailey Sawers?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short?
Here.
Councillor Smith?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Tolland?
Hi, I am here.
Bailey Keenan?
Present.
Councillor Crookshank?
Present.
Councillor Finnegan?
Good evening, everyone, I'm here.
Councillor McHugh?
Present.
I've received apologies for councillor McCarvin. Councillor Malone?
I'm present.
Councillor Scullen?
Evening, present.
Councillor Shears?
Evening, I'm here.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey McPherson?
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Creighton?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
I've received apologies for Bailey Scott. Mrs. McBean?
I'm here.
Mrs. Little?
Yes, I'm here, good evening.
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Barclay?
Hi, I'm here.
Mrs. Javid? I'll mark his absent and Mr. Anderson McGinnis? I'll also mark his absent and that concludes the roll call.
Thanks, Solian. Can I just now ask you to go through the first item of business, please?
Thank you, convener. Item one is declaration of interest. Are there any declarations to the agenda as it stands?
Yeah, I'm not seeing anybody indicating, so take it there isn't any.
Yeah. Item two is achievement of children and young people with additional support needs, and this is for no time.
Yeah, no, thank you. Councillor Crookshank, I think you were just in first there, so I'll come to you first.
Thank you, convener. I'd like to welcome the report. It's overall, it's a very positive report with the improving outcomes for our children with additional support needs. However, I note that the level of need of our children continues to rise. You also reference in the report that you're carrying out a review of ASN and developing your inclusion strategy. I suppose when I was looking through the report, there was no mention of neurodiverse divergent children, namely those with ADHD. And so I didn't feel that they were covered within the report. However, I do realise that you are doing it. And I would ask that any report is brought back to the committee once it's completed before introducing the new strategy. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
No, thank you for your comments, Councillor Crookshank. I'm just going to pass first of all to executive director Mrs. May, although I do think you might want to pass on to other officers, but I'll pass to you first, Audrey.
Okay, thanks, convener, and thanks for the question, Councillor Crookshank. I'll answer part of that question and then pass to Mr. Fleming, Paul Fleming, our head of education, who might pick up the details around ADHD and neurodiverse, I can't even say it, neurodiversity and so on, and how we categorise in terms of describing the criteria and the differentiations of different levels of support needed. So Paul will pick that bit up, but I will just give an assurance that Paul is leading with his team just now, that review of our ASN provision across the city, including in our enhanced support areas as well as our specialist provisions. And we will absolutely bring that back to committee once we have completed that review. And before we launch our new inclusion strategy, we would share this with committee as well. So I would give that assurance and I'll ask Paul to pick up the detail about how we have grouped, I suppose, the different levels of ASN in the report. Thanks, convener.
Okay, Paul, if you want to pick that up.
Thanks, convener, and thank you very much, Councillor Crookshank, for the questions and indeed your comments about the positive report overall. I'll pass on to all of the staff in schools and the young people for the work. And we use as a categories, it's the pupil census as the Scottish government returns, so we have very clear guidance from Scottish government in terms of how to record a young person's or child's needs on the form, and they don't use the overall term neurodivergent. You'll notice for the report that it has a separate comment for autism as part of that. But in terms of ADHD and those presenting behaviours, they are to be recorded under social emotional behavioural needs if they require that additional support because of that aspect of neurodivergence, as it might manifest itself in different types of behaviours. So they are recorded under that. But individual schools, of course, would know which young people have the very specific needs and that support would be very much tailored to the individual pupils as appropriate. And we'll make sure that we're able to make that clear in the inclusion strategy that Audrey referenced as well. So hopefully that helps answer your question, Councillor Crookshank.
Okay, Councillor Crookshank, are you happy with that response? Yeah, okay. Councillor Coleman, you're next on the list. I don't know if it's just me, is Daniel, are you still there? I didn't hear anything, so I don't know if that's me or...
Yes, sorry.
Okay. It's down here now, yeah.
Excellent, thank you. On behalf of the Liberal Democratic Party, I welcome this report, to see how excellent it is. My group colleagues and I are delighted to see the successes of the pupils in the city, in particular the additional support. In addition, the examination successes are very positive over the past five years and the case studies at Ben's East Street six are excellent. And if I may, I would just like to highlight the award of Social Enterprise that comes back soon, which many of us won't be able to see in the details of. Really is fantastic and I think we all should be proud of achieving something.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. You were kind of breaking up a little bit there, so... But I did catch most of that, so thank you for your comments. I don't know if there's anything that either Audrey or Paul you want to add, or are you happy with that? Okay. Okay, so thank you for your comments, Daniel. Billy Keenan, you're next.
Thanks, convener. And I note in the report that we obviously work with the health service as well in dealing with our children with additional support needs. And I suppose it's really important that we know the needs of every child when it comes to delivering the best possible education to suit their needs. Can I ask if, or no doubt officers will be aware, that children with the diagnosis of ADHD aren't able to get medications at the moment because there's either a shortage through procurement, the Scottish government, or a ban on the Scottish government introducing more children to the meds that professionals have diagnosed. So I'm wondering how many children we've got in our schools in Dundee that fall into that category, given that we should know the needs of every child and effectively we should be lobbying on behalf of their parents and them to make sure that they get the medications that they need so as that they can settle in to absorbing the education that's being delivered that bit more easily.
Okay, I don't know, Mrs. May, if you want to answer that in the first place, and then pass to Heather.
Yeah, just to say we are actually very aware and, yeah, we do work in very close partnership with our health colleagues in this area and we're aware of medication restrictions and shortages. I will pass over to Paul Fleming to see if he has a better handle on actual numbers than I do. If not, I would just give a guarantee we'll come back to committee with that detail, but I'll see if Paul has more detail first. Thanks, convener.
Okay, Paul, you want to comment on that?
Thank you, convener. Thanks, Bailey Keenan, for the question. It is a quite complex area and really important for young people. Of course, not all young people with ADHD or ADD or ODD and so on, the various relations to attention deficit and hyperactivity will receive medication. Some do and some have different doses of that, so it's very complex in terms of it really is down to the individual. At city level, we don't hold information, but every individual school will hold the information about the young people, the numbers of young people in their school who've been affected by an impact on their medication. So as Audrey says, Bill Keenan, I'll look to see if I can source that detail from individual schools to let you know. It has changed and it does change as different people are getting an increase in medication. So I don't have the up-to-date figures just now, but I'll make sure to source them and get them to you.
Do you have to talk, Bill Keenan?
Yeah, I'd very much appreciate that. You know, if it's a fluctuating picture, it'd be good to have an understanding as to whether it was worse three months ago than it is at the moment. I just know that man led to believe that some children may have been waiting close on a year for these medications that can be prescribed but, you know, are not likely to be delivered due to the Scottish government. So, you know, I would very much appreciate the figure so as that we have a handle on what's going on within Dundee and we try our best to resolve the problems for the parents and children.
Well, thank you for that, Bill Keenan. And I would probably point out that I think, don't think this is a Scottish government issue, this is a British-wide issue. It isn't just in Scotland, so I think it's probably worth to clarify that. Now, earlier on, Mr. Gibson, you had your hand up and now you've come into the chat, but you did put your hand up at this point. So I'm just going to bring you in at this point, because this is when you initially asked to come in. So, Mr. Gibson, I'll pass yourself.
Okay, thank you. Again, it's good reading the improvements in additional sport needs, achievement and attainment. But I think, I guess, I'm not sure exactly how to word it as a question, but the budget that was passed obviously had the measures of reducing teacher numbers and the impact, the state of impact being negative on children and young people, negative on children and young people with disabilities, negative on children and young people with socio-economic disabilities, who are more likely to have identified additional sport needs. Like I say, I'm not exactly sure how to word that as a question, but...
Well...
It is a question.
Yeah, certainly.
I had to offset, I guess, the world of the plans.
Yeah, so certainly, I think I get the gist of what you're asking. So again, pass to Mrs. May in the first instance, and again, you might want to pass on to other officers where necessary.
Well, as Mr. Gibson himself said, I'm not sure what the question is. But yes, there was a decision at February City Governance Budget Committee to set our teacher numbers for the year and was explained at the time that's around the staffing exercise that we carry out every year. So in parallel to that, though, we are looking at reviewing a provision for ASN. So as we carry through that process, we're not in a position right now to say, well, that means we need more or less teachers to deliver the support that our different children need. Because, as you know, we've got quite a mixed model across the city of some teach, some children, young people having mainstream support, some having enhanced support areas, we have different categories of enhanced support areas and we have two special schools. So as part of the ASN review, we will look at all of that and part of that will be looking at, so who do we need? What teachers do we need? What support staff do we need? Because head teachers frequently tell me it's not more teachers we need, it's actually support staff because of the level of need and how we want to support young people. So all of that will be brought back, as I've already said, to councillor Crookshank's question about what that will look like when we complete this review.
Okay. Mr. Gibson, you happy with that response? You're on mute.
Of course, good old fashioned on mute. I guess the question would be, is there anticipated, with the increasing need, is the lower teacher numbers, is it anticipated to impact this improvement negatively? If that question is better phrased that way, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. Audrey, if you want to come back in.
I suppose the short answer would be no, because we don't know because we're carrying out a review and we've not completed it yet. So happy to share the information that's emerging from the review through Paul and his team with Mr. Gibson if that would help him to be reassured that we're looking at this carefully. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so you happy with that?
Thanks.
Yeah. Okay, so councillor Anderson, you are next.
Thank you, convener. Just while I've been waiting, I've checked on the website and it's a worldwide shortage of ADHD medicines. It's not a Scottish shortage particularly, it's a global problem. It would just say, congratulations to the team. I thought this was a great report, particularly given the higher, you know, fifteen percent of our registrations, you having languages other than English, Gaelic, Scots or sign language. So you're dealing with, you know, much higher demand than the rest of Scotland. My specific question was in relation to point five, point six, where you state that there's one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight children and young people assessed and or declared as having a disability in schools in Dundee and one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight have been assessed. So I was just wondering what the status was of the missing, I think it's about two hundred and sixty children, whether they're awaiting assessment and if they are, whether they're receiving any additional support at the moment.
Okay, again, first place I'll go, come to is Audrey.
Yeah, I think I'll pass this one over to Paul Fleming, if that's okay, to answer this detail. Thank you, convener.
Okay, Paul.
Thanks, convener, and thank you very much for the kind comments, councillor Anderson, for the very important question. Again, it's down to the Scottish government definitions of assessed and declared. So in terms of declaring, folks can declare that they have a disability. We are all sort of entitled to do that and then there's a formal assessment in terms of that medical assessment, different diagnoses, that's the nuanced differences. What's really, really important in terms of additional support needs is irrespective of a diagnosis, whatever that may be, it's a disability or other additional support need, we treat, we support the need. So if that child or young person is presenting with a need in collaboration with the family, we put a support plan in. we put a support plan in around that need. In one sense, it almost doesn't matter then if there's that diagnosis, whether it's assessed or not, we support the need within, because sometimes that can be waiting on partners in terms of their assessments. But we have the child or young person there and it's very important we do what we can to support the need. So hope that helps answer, but happy to provide any further detail.
Yeah, councillor Anderson, for some reason I always keep calling you councillor Alexander. I don't know if I'm promoting you or what, but Heather, are you happy with that response?
Just, just that's really reassuring, so that they're being supportive irrespective of whether or not an assessment has been carried out. That's very reassuring to hear, thank you.
Okay, and so next on my list is councillor Scollan.
Hi, I've just got a question about five point three. I just wondered, is it language issues why the statistics are higher nationally in Dundee? Or is there another reason why they're slightly higher here?
Yeah, again, I'll just pass to Audrey in the first instance.
Yeah, it's probably, again, a question for Paul Fleming. Thanks, Convena.
Yeah, Paul.
Thanks, Convena, and I'm not sure if I picked that up right. I think it was a paragraph five point three in relation to languages.
Yes.
Um, okay, and the question, yeah, so record as having language, okay, yeah. So in terms of areas of deprivation, so this is very close. Thank you very much for the question, councillor Tolland. In the national statistics, statistics even, around early learning and childcare, there's very nuanced differences again between the percentages. But this is because what we're seeing is in areas of higher deprivation, there are greater language and communication needs. And we do have a higher percentage in Dundee. And so you may be aware through previous reports that we were very closely with our speech and language colleagues and have very specific additional projects as well as universal work taking place in earlier year settings because of that. So there is, I think we are seeing an increasing level of need around social emotional behavioural needs in our, in our settings here in Dundee.
Okay, you happy with that response?
Yes, thank you.
Right, okay, councillor McHugh, you're next.
I've actually had my question answered by someone else's question. Thank you.
No, that's fine. And therefore, the last, sorry, I've just seen that come up in the chat, so apologies. And the last comment then is from councillor Tolland, so I'll pass it to you, Shabon.
Thank you. Just really in response to Bailey Keenan's question regarding ADHD medication, because I think there's maybe just a little bit misinformation here. As councillor Anderson said, it is a national, sorry, it's a global shortage due to manufacturing problems as well as the massive increase of diagnosis within ADHD. It's also maybe worth mentioning as well that it's the allocation of medications done at a UK level. So Scotland is slightly restricted in that. The issue sometimes, of course, is that if we put kids on medication and have to take them off, then that's actually more deeply problematic for kids. So trying to manage that at a local level is particularly difficult. But it's not a Scottish government issue as such. It's something that the Scottish government has to deal with. But there's lots of different national and global factors that are taken into account. So that's really just my comment.
No, and I think that's a comment well made. And I don't want to use the B words, but I think Brexit's had a part to play as well. So I think there's a lot of issues here and, you know. But however, for our young people, and not just our young people, actually, anybody in the city who's required that medication, it's a huge challenge and hopefully it'll be a challenge that will be fixed soon. With that, I don't see anybody else wishing to come in, so are we all happy to accept this report? Not seeing anything otherwise, so with that, that report's agreed. And that is the business for children, families and communities for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Convena. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Regeneration Housing and Estate Management Committee.
Good evening. Over to Eileen, please.
Thank you, Convena. Item one is declaration of interest. Are there any declarations to the agenda as it stands?
I see a few declarations. Councillor Duncan, you're first, please.
Yeah, thanks, Convena. It's just that I live in one of the properties listed, so I will not be taking any back.
Oh, thank you. And councillor Coleman?
It's the exact same for me, mister convenor, living in a property that is listed on the report.
Okay, thanks very much for that and that's noted. Thank you, Eileen. Over to you.
Thank you. Item two, housing emergency, and this item has been placed on the agenda at the request of Bailey Keenan.
Thank you. I think first and foremost, I'll go to Mr Many, just to make sure we do this properly, just to confirm, Mr Many, that we have to decide whether to suspend standing orders before we can speak on this item. Is that correct?
Thanks very much, Convena. I confirm that's correct. The question of suspension of standing orders is decided by a simple majority of members present and voting.
That's great. Thank you very much for confirming. And on that basis, I will not be looking to suspend standing orders on this item. And look for a second, please.
I'm happy to second you, Convena.
Thank you, Bailey Sawyers. Bailey Keenan, do you have a second? Obviously, I'm going to move it, yes, and I'll call on a second, yeah. I see councillor Shears has seconded, so we just go to the vote, please, Eileen. Thank you.
Thank you, Convena. So the motion by Bailey Keenan, seconded by councillor Shears, is to suspend standing order forty-two. The amendment by councillor Flynn, seconded by Bailey Sawyers, is that standing order forty-two not be suspended? For the purpose of this vote, I'm happy for members to indicate their preference by saying suspend or not suspend.
Thank you for that. Makes it a bit clearer. Okay, over to yourself.
Thank you, Convena.
Do not suspend.
Councillor Alexander?
Not suspend.
Councillor Anderson?
Not suspend.
Lord Provost Campbell?
Not suspend.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell?
Not suspend.
Bailey Dawson?
Not suspend.
Councillor Nakla?
Not suspend.
Councillor Hunter?
Not suspend.
Councillor Lynn?
Not suspend.
Bailey Roberts?
Not suspend.
Councillor Rome?
Not suspend.
Bailey Sawyers?
Not suspend.
Councillor Short?
Not suspend.
Councillor Smith?
Do not suspend.
Councillor Tolland?
Aye, aye, not suspend.
Bailey Keenan?
Suspend.
Councillor Crookshan?
Suspend.
Councillor Finnegan?
Suspend.
Councillor McHugh?
Suspend.
Councillor Llewone?
Uh, suspend.
Councillor Scollan?
Suspend.
Councillor Shears?
Suspend.
Bailey Wright?
Suspend.
Bailey MacPherson?
Suspend.
Councillor Coleman? Councillor Coleman?
Suspend.
Thank you.
Suspend.
Councillor Creighton?
Suspend.
And councillor Duncan?
Suspend.
That is twelve for the motion that standing order forty-two is suspended and fifteen for the amendment that standing order forty-two is not suspended. So that amendment is carried.
Thank you, Eileen, and as it's carried, we will not be discussing this, so we'll move on to the next item, please.
Apologies, item three is tenders received by head of design and property, and this is for approval.
As you say, there's a number of tenders for a variety of works across the city. Councillor Creighton, please.
Thank you, Convena. The upgrades to controlled entry systems are welcome. Can I ask in relation to controlled entry, what progress the council has made in regards to revisiting ballots in partially owned blocks where the majority was originally not obtained for controlling entry installation? And what proportion of these blocks have been revisited in terms of new ballots? And for some years later, households in each block changes? And is the department confident that will give households in such blocks the opportunity to rebalance over time?
Take that to Olga, I think. Olga, you there?
Yes, thank you, Convena. Unfortunately, I don't have that level of detail available to me, but I will ensure it's provided to members post this meeting.
Is that okay, Michael?
Yeah, thank you, Olga. If you have that information, if you could pass it on, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks. Pass it on to all elected members, Olga, that would be appreciated. Thank you. I see no other questions or comments, so we'll just take this as all agreed. Thank you very much, and that's the business for neighbourhood regeneration, housing and estate management. Thank you.
Thank you, Convena. The final committee this evening is the City Governance Committee.
I see councillor Alexander has a technical issue at the moment, so he's going to dial in another advice, Mr Many.
Thank you for confirming, councillor Flynn. I'm praying this is working. Can everybody hear me okay? Grant, excellent. Sorry about that. My screen went completely blank and I couldn't see anything, so apologies. Eileen, over to you with the agenda, please.
Thanks, Convena. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Any declarations at the moment or happy to pick them up during the course of the meeting if necessary? See, nobody rushing to let me know, so we'll take that as a no. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item two, minute of pension subcommittee and pension board held on the eighteenth of March, twenty twenty-four, is submitted for noting.
And this is agreed. Thank you very much. Okay.
That takes us to item three, support for food larders and food banks. And the item has been placed on the agenda at the request of councillor Alexander.
Thank you very much. I'm going to defer to my colleague councillor Tolland, who will move the amendment. If I can ask officers to please put that on screen and have it circulated to all elected members, that'd be appreciated. And I'll defer to councillor Tolland.
Thank you. That's the amendment, well, that's the motion coming up now. It's, to a certain extent, it's self-explanatory, I think if anybody can see that. So effectively, last summer, myself and councillor Anderson did a quite significant visit with food banks and larders and discussions regarding some of the issues that has been raised. One of the issues actually was the cost of rent, which seems to have become in some areas quite prohibitive, prohibitive. And it caused some anxieties with the staff that were working in those teams. Because what they felt was it wasn't allowing them that security in order to provide food in a more sustainable fashion. So I'm really, really, really pleased to kind of be bringing this forward. It seems perhaps like a small thing, but I think it's actually a huge thing and hopefully it will have a huge impact on those that need the most support. You know, we'll come into the fairness commission report and some of the kind of statistics there are quite harrowing in terms of poverty and in terms of child poverty. We have nearly 12,000 people using food banks on a yearly basis now. We shouldn't have a situation, we shouldn't have a society where food banks and places like that are needed. But we're here through national and global events. But we're here and we have those circumstances where people are in desperate need of food. And this will allow some food banks and larders who deal specifically with food distribution to have a bit more security and a bit more money in order to provide better, effective and healthier food for the population. So I hope that this motion will be accepted en masse. I think it's a very sensible motion and it's, I think it's part of the ethos I think that Dundee City Council want to work by. I think that we've done a lot of anti-poverty work here, a lot of anti-poverty initiatives. And Dundee has led the way in that. And I think this is one of the examples where we could make a difference.
Thanks very much, councillor Tolland. If I can perhaps ask committee services to take the motion off-screen at the moment? So can see if everybody, that'd be greatly appreciated. And I'm obviously happy to second, I'm hoping that we do have unanimous support for this. Obviously, there's been an extensive amount of work across a whole series of different areas when we think about that fairness agenda. Of course, cost of living and the cost of living summits have been part of that, but not in isolation. And I know how incredibly valuable every single member of this committee hold and respect the work of food larders and food banks and food larders right across the city. I've had the privilege of working in some of those food banks. And I was just there two weeks ago in Locky and it's, it's no understatement to say it's a lifeline. These are absolutely vital services. And when we think about the way in which we've deployed resources and think back to the budget with the additional £400,000 that was specifically there to support our food banks and food larders, it does beg the question if we're providing some funding and then taking an element back through rent, whether that is the most efficient or useful way for these particular organisations to operate and for us to work hand in glove with them. So I'm sure it will go a long way to supporting those endeavours. Of course, we need some further information, which will be provided by officers, and that's exactly what this motion is seeking. So I will come to questions, I think so. Councillor Short?
Yeah, I suppose, I don't know if fortunate is the correct word, but across Maryfield, we don't have a community centre. And so we have a situation where the community have provided food larder opportunities, whether it be the school, Boomerang or the church on Albert Street. And obviously, interestingly, before my time, but Boomerang was a community asset transfer. And we have various places on leases, et cetera. So the question will be basically, when this is looked at, presumably all options will be looked at when discussing the conversations with the various organisations, because some may be in a position to do the full hog and go cut, and others will be long-term leases. So I just wondered, is it the full gambit, basically?
Thanks, councillor Short. If I can just kind of respond to that. Obviously, the motion's very specific in terms of what it's seeking to do and what it's asking officers to do. And it doesn't go into cats, et cetera. My expectation is that those discussions happen anyway, our community officers. As I know you know, I do an extensive amount of work in terms of community engagement as well. So it's certainly my hope and aspiration with this motion that those conversations will continue to be deployed in the hope that we can deliver maximum benefit in our communities and look at all available options anyway. I'll come on to councillor Shears next.
Thanks, Convena. I mean, it goes without saying that Labour Group will be supporting. And I think it's something really important that is being done. It is a sad state of affairs that we need food banks, but as so many people have said, and they're such a lifeline for the city, the work they do and what they deliver to their communities, we would be a city certainly worse off without that help. So just a small comment really to welcome this, and we will be supporting it unquestionably.
Thanks very much, Pete, for your support and of course, your work in advocacy for the groups as well, because I know that you've been spearheading efforts and really engaged in that agenda, which I think we all appreciate as well. So thank you for that. Bailey MacPherson, Fraser.
Thanks indeed, Convena, and likewise, the Liberal Democrat Group is hugely supportive of what is being proposed. I know that obviously proposals will thereafter come forward from officers. But I think it's to be hoped that the removal of these charges will be a long-term commitment, not just for one financial year or, 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 you know, a shorter period. I have a question that's really related to the use of council premises in relation to food banks, a very specific issue that has been raised at committee in the past. And that's the withdrawal of authorisation, if you like, for one group in Millamains to use a part of the sheltered lounge there. Now, I've spoken with Mr Boyle regarding this because I understand that arrangement has come to an end. And I know that the council does, where it possibly can, support the use of council premises where it can in relation to food larders, food banks and so on. I'm aware of the specific issues at Millamains. My question really, and it's probably for Mr Boyle, just to reassure the committee, have the local community been signposted to alternative provision? Because what you don't want is a situation where, for reasons that we understand, the use of a particular council premises for that purpose was no longer supported. But what we do want to ensure is that the provision of the facilities that were previously provided But what we do want to ensure is that the provision of the facilities that were previously provided there, that the community can be signposted to alternative provision in the local area.
Thanks, Fraser. I'll bring Tony in. I think it's safe to say the answer will be yes. But Tony.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Yeah, the answer is yes. Of course, this was an unregistered, unofficial food bank facility that was at Millamains, but there are several nearby. The main one being Fintry Church or others at Whitfield Community Centre and in Finn Mill Medical Centre. I can also reassure Bailey McPherson that there is clear signposting to these facilities at Millamains.
Yep, that's appreciated. Obviously, the Finty ones being a lot closer than that in Whitfield. But nonetheless, I think the fact that the community are being signposted to alternative provision is welcome. So grateful to Mr. Boyle for that. And going back to the substantive issue tonight, as I say, we're very supportive of what's being proposed. Thank you, convener.
Thanks very much, Fraser. Really appreciate it. And I'll come to councillor Malone next. Charlie. Still on mute, Charlie?
Yeah, no, no, I have trouble getting off mute. It's actually superseded by a possible declaration of interest, so I'll wait till then. I don't think there is a conflict of interest, but I'd rather just wait till then and then I'll make my comments if that's okay.
Okay, I'll come back to you. I think councillor Cunningham was next, and then I'll come back to you, Charlie. So Jax.
Yeah, just following up from Bailey McPherson. Sorry, I've got nine-month-old twins making a noise in the background there, but sorry. Just following up from Fraser regarding the Millamains food larder. They're still actually working out a gazebo in the area, giving out food parcels. And the North East is very low on food bank provision because I think Fairfield's under not getting any support and things as well. Finty Church is closing and moving along to Finty Community Centre. So, and the council officers have been helpful. I'm not saying that we've tried really hard. However, to access food supports in the North East ward can be difficult. So I'm just wondering how we could engage with these people that have been providing a good source of support to the community, even if it's just one food parcel. But overall, I think the North East are going to raw deal.
Thanks, Jax. That's really helpful in terms of your comments and obviously acknowledging that officers have been trying to engage in that. If it's all right with you, I'm happy to take the conversation off-table as well, because there might well be something we can reflect in the conversations that are happening within the Dundee Food Network itself. And just in terms of coordination across the city and thinking about where gaps might be specifically in the North East. So happy to pick that up with you and we can, you know, have a further conversation both with officers and the Food Network itself.
Brilliant. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you very much. Okay, I'll come back to you, Charlie.
Thanks, convener. I probably should have spotted this at the start. It was kind of more of a general paper. But you mentioned about the Lockie food larder and we're really grateful that you kind of came along and saw the fantastic work that you do. I'm actually on the management group of the Lockie food larder through the work I do with them. And I just wonder if that's a conflict. What I do is I give advice on management issues such as human resource practices and stuff like that, not on the operation of the food larder itself. I just wonder if I have any to declare an interest or whether I can make a contribution.
Yeah, I'll perhaps bring in officers. I think what they'll say is it's ultimately a judgment for each elected member to make that decision. But I'm hoping on the back of the fact that it's going to be unanimous, in a sense, it probably isn't necessarily, you know, significant an issue. But Mr. Many, sorry.
Thanks, convener. I confirm that I don't believe that councillor Malone has an interest to declare this evening. And if he wants further advice, he could perhaps be in touch with me before the report is brought back to this committee in due course.
Really. Many thanks for that. My point was going to be to support you, convener, and obviously support Siobhan, who actually was the person that moved the motion. It's good to see local councillors working together. And it's probably the first time for a long time I've had to say well done councillor Alexander for the paper that you put forward. And I support it absolutely 100%, 100%. I've seen what the Lockie food larder does. I go there every single week. And the need is, at certain times, it's so acute that people are queuing up down to the bus stop on Logie Street. And it's that big a demand. And I think there's more than just the financial aspect of it. I think you're right. I think it gives them that security. And also it's one less thing to worry about in terms of the administration and dealing with the legal issues around kind of rent and stuff like that. So I think that'll give them a good boost. And it will give everybody a good boost. But we cannot ever underestimate the contribution that a handful of individuals make in serving their community. It's absolutely huge. And without them, we would have many, many more issues to deal with as a result of that poverty. So as you know, councillor Alexander, I tend to speak a lot. And that's why I'm a university lecturer. But it's a long-winded way of saying that certainly I'd back the Labour Group in backing the motion that you put forward.
Great. Thanks very much, Charlie, for those comments. I think what I'm sensing is there's unanimous agreement. And again, it's just looking under every rock to make sure that we're looking at every lever at our disposal to support what is incredible efforts across the city. And if we can pull on that lever and alleviate some of that strain, as you rightly say, then that is to everybody's benefit, I think. So thank you for all your contributions. I take it as agreed unanimously on this item. Thank you very much. Arlene, back to you.
Okay, that takes us on to item four, council plan 2022 to 27, progress report for 23, 24, and you're asked to agree the recommendations.
Thank you very much. Yeah, this is obviously part of the standard report and the progress update on the main objectives, the main priorities, in terms of both the themes, the actions and the targets within the progress report. Overall, you'll see that 64% of the performance indicators in the council plan are on or within 5% of target, which is an increase from the 50% in last year's annual report. But clearly, we always want to strive for 100%, so there is always room for improvement. It's acknowledging both the constraints and the challenges, as well as the opportunities and the successes, is the only way that we're going to really make more progress against that. The progress report presents the most improved indicators as well as areas for improvement. As I've said, those areas for improvement will be the focus over the next year to get back on track and make sure they are striving for that target that was set out in the earlier report. It's also recommended that committee not only note the content of the report, but remits to scrutiny committee for consideration and remits the council leadership team to monitor the progress and report back, implementing those improvements that I've just outlined as well. So happy to take questions and comments at this point. I think councillor Duncan, you are first.
Yeah, thanks, convener. A quick question for officers, just looking for the wee bit of quality here. The last committee is on the 10th of June. I recall item two had the local government benchmarking theme, what performance indicators presented for 2022 to 23. This showed that of the 13 targets in the council plan to reduce child poverty, only four were actually on target and nine were styled as areas for improvement. Whereas this report indicates that the council plan in the area of child poverty and inequalities, there's only six indicators now, of which they are within 5% of the target. And my question anyways around the fact that the two reports, although they comment upon the same information, it seems that they're using different indicators or certainly that the number of indicators have actually been reduced. You know, compared to the last time, as contrasted to what was before this this evening. So I suppose my point is really that if we carry on like that, it's actually difficult for elected members to draw any concrete conclusions between the two reports. So I'm really just looking for feedback on the officers as to why the difference.
Yeah, and I'll bring in the head of the chief executive service, Andrea Calderon, in just a moment. I think it's fair to say probably not just elected members. I know that there's a significant amount of data, data analytics and reporting that officers have to undertake in very different formats from very different sources sometimes, and it can be quite complex. And obviously, some of those relate to city plan versus council plan versus service plans, and it can be quite complex. But I think Andrea, hopefully, will have a better answer for you than I could potentially offer. Andrea?
Yeah, so the council plan was agreed prior to us then picking the information out of the local government benchmarking data. So when we set the council plan, we decided to focus on probably less indicators because we were going to have a range of reports coming through committee. So to try and not duplicate where all the information's held. So we have reports, we have information that comes through the benchmarking data, we have the council plan data, and then we have the city plan data, but we also have the fairness one which drills again. So there was a kind of a plan in place that we would just pull out key information for the council plan because it had five themes in it and we didn't want to, I suppose, burden people with a huge amount of data. The benchmarking data has got over 108 indicators. So what we've tried to do with the benchmarking data is to pull out for the key themes areas that we think most match the council plan. So that's why there's more in the benchmarking because there's 108 indicators and we didn't report on all 108. I don't know if that helps you or if I could do something, maybe provide further information that will show it in a bit more detail for you separately.
Thanks. No, thanks a lot for the explanation. And it's certainly not a criticism. It's just these reports are useful, but you know, for the likes of myself, you know, it's, the easier you can make it to compare and contrast, you know, the the better that certainly I would like it. So just really, you know, you can't report on everything, I understand that. But maybe just a bit of narrative along the lines of what you've just explained would be helpful.
Yeah, we're happy to do that because the benchmarking appears in a lot of different reports. And I forgot to mention the service plan as well, which is another layer of reporting, so.
I mean, it's great to have that wealth of information, but it can somewhat confuse things when we're having these sort of regular reports as well. So no, it's an absolutely fair point. Craig, and thanks very much, Andrea, for offering that clarification and follow-up. Councillor Keenan, Bailey Keenan, I should say. Kevin.
Okay. Questions around the strategic housing investment plan? And given that we don't have a housing emergency in Dundee, perhaps some of our councillors think there is. What's the plan to build houses going forward past 2024? Given that the Scottish government's cut the housing money towards affordable housing? You know, I see a lot in here around home insulation, but I don't see about delivering new homes and making a difference to people in the city, given there were almost 8,000 on the waiting list.
Thanks for the question, Kevin. I suppose that's probably more of a substantive question. Remember, going through the process of pulling together the next iteration of the strategic housing investment plan, as you rightly referenced, which will contain all of the information in terms of future programming, funding and how that will be resourced, et cetera. But I'm happy to defer to officers if there's anything that either Tony or Olga perhaps want to come in with. Tony, can I come to you in the first instance?
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey Keenan. I think you're correct, convener, and that these will be part of plans that are being developed for the future and for future consideration of committee. Thanks.
Is there a bit more detail, Tony, that you could give me on that? Just, you know, given that if we're going to build 200 nod a year at the moment, what are we likely to build moving forward? I know I'm putting you on the spot a bit, but, you know, the motion that I put forward a while ago, it's offered us a very long time to think about it. So is there an officer that's able to give me a bit of an understanding of where we're going? Given that it must be about three or four months for you originally raised the question.
Thanks. I'll bring in Olga, Kevin, just to perhaps offer better insight. But again, I think that's a piece of work that is incredibly comprehensive that they're working through in developing the next iteration of the strategic housing investment plan. So it comes together as part of that broader programme. But Olga, do you want to come in at that point?
Yes, fundamentally, the ship will set out that forward investment programme. We are about to complete the piece of work to look at what the investment programme looks like for 24, 25 in detail. And I expect that to be completed over the next couple of weeks. And that has been quite a detailed piece of work, working with our housing association partners. In terms of future years, obviously, we are waiting to hear what the resource planning assumption that we have to work with is. And once that's known, we should be in a position to come back to council with the draft strategic housing investment plan. And that would contain that detail that you're asking for, Bailey Keenan.
Thanks very much, Olga. That's helpful just for clarifying in terms of where you are at the process. And obviously, it's a rolling plan. So as things change, then that will be updated accordingly as well. So we look forward to that further detail coming forward. Councillor Shears, you're next.
Thanks, convener. I've got a couple of questions, if you'll allow me. And my first question is on the drop in care experienced young people going into positive destinations. I'm just wondering if we can get some background behind why we're seeing that drop and kind of what we're doing moving forward to get that up. I know we've had a lot of reports.
When we consider that in 2021, 100% of care experienced school leavers entered a positive destination. So it is a decline. And it is a shared concern, but it needs to come with a caveat that it involves relatively small numbers. So that figure that you can see there, 71% in 2022 to 23, involved 17 young people leaving school, five of whom didn't enter into a positive destination. And it also needs to be looked at in the context of overall improvements in attendance, exclusion rates, and attainment, which have improved markedly for the care experienced population as a whole. Our data is now telling us that we need to focus in more sharply on those in kinship care. And we have two arrangements, two broad strategies in place in relation to that. One is our promise, and as you know, we have a kinship care team, which is currently involved in a range of initiatives with different partners across the city to support those in kinship care at school, at home and in the community. And one is our youth participation strategy, which was brought to committee just a few weeks ago. But three elements of that, for instance, include better identification of children that are struggling in S3, S4, a review of mentoring arrangements and engagement with employers to develop more flexible and creative approaches towards support to care experienced children when they do enter the place of work. So we acknowledge it is an issue, but it does occur within the context of overall improvements. And as I say, our data is now focusing on those key priorities of those in kinship care. We have a range of actions in place to address it.
It's a really comprehensive and useful answer. Thanks, Glen. And Pete, you happy with that? And I'm happy to defer to you for your next question as well.
Yeah, that's really, really reassuring. Thanks for that, Glen. And my second question is about the uptake in free school meals. And we're sitting at about 66%. This has come up. I sit on the board of Tayside contracts as well. So it's come up there. And when it's brought up in Tayside contracts, the answer is usually ask your council officers. So then what are we doing to kind of get that uptake higher than where it can be? Something that jumped out with me. Skipping forward a bit, in the next report, childhood obesity is mentioned. And I think there's a clear link there between more kids on free school meals. I expect we'll see less children battling obesity. So I'm just wondering if officers could talk me through what we're doing to improve the uptake in free school meals.
Yeah, another good question, Pete. And I think you're right on that point about nutrition as well. Paul, Mr. Fleming, come to you.
Thank you very much, convener. Thank you, councillor Shears, for, again, the very important question. This is a very important improvement point in our services improvement plan over the next three years, linked to a couple of different aspects, the physical health aspect, but also then the financial help for families to increase the uptake. So we have a very specific plan. Some of that is sectoral from the early years into primary to secondary, and some of it's overall. And we are seeing an improvement. So for example, last year in primary, or the year before in primary, it was 56%. And we've increased that by 4%. And we've increased the secondary uptake by 5% over the last year. We are doing very, very specific actions depending on individual schools. But for example, primary sevens all had a free meal at break time over the last week or so to try and encourage the uptake as they go into secondary school. So we're doing various specific things in individual settings. We're happy to share that detail with you. But it is a core part of our service plan and we will be reporting an update on that as the council plan was tonight. We'll be doing that in the Children, Families and Communities Committee early in the academic session.
Thanks, Paul. Happy with that, Pete?
Yeah, that's good. I think if we get the individual data to all councillors as well, would help so we can see what's going on in our onwards. Thanks very much.
Thanks very much for that. And I see no other questions at this point. So can I take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Okay, Arlene.
Item five, fairness and local child poverty action plan report.
Item five, Fairness and Local Child Poverty Action Plan Report, Annual Report for twenty three, twenty four. This is for approval.
Thanks very much, Arlene. This is obviously an incredibly important report and relates to all of the main issues that we all are striving for better on when we think about that broader fairness agenda, how it relates to issues of poverty and deprivation, attainment and everything else. And it's obviously been a comprehensive piece of work that is regularly updated in terms of this annual report. And it looks at more granular detail in terms of how those actions are having an impact. The Dundee Local Child Poverty Annual Report is combined with that wider plan associated with the fairness strategy as well. And that, of course, was in place before the child poverty reporting requirements came into effect. And again, just shows that commitment to regular reporting, understanding the issues and trying to tackle them head on. Key fairness developments, actions and progress are presented across six fairness themes. And there's also other documents which you'll be live to, which are presented and updated fairly regularly as well. I think it's really important to also call out the fact that this report and its contents are something which relate and are used and engaged with our Dundee Fairness Leadership Panel, which of course includes members of the public with direct experience of these issues of poverty and deprivation and helping form the approach as well. And it would be remiss of me to also not take this opportunity, I suppose, to also note the very sad and untimely death of the co-chair of the Dundee Leadership, Fairness Leadership Panel, my co-chair for the last few years, Tony Gibson, who was an absolute stalwart in representing the broader Dundee community and articulating the issues, the challenges, advocating for those that were, are less fortunate than ourselves and always being able to help inspire and focus on the issues. And I will very, very much miss him as co-chair of the City Fairness Leadership Panel. And I'm sure you'll all agree and support. My sympathy has been passed again to his family and everybody that he had a very positive impact on. But I couldn't, in agreeing, hopefully, this report tonight go without mentioning Tony because Tony has been spearheading those efforts along with many members of the community for a number of years. And it's incredible to work with people like that who can get under the skin of these issues, tell you exactly what you need to hear and tell you what you need to do about it. And that, I think, is something that we all appreciate. So with all that said, I will come to questions and comments. I'll come to you first, Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, Convenor, and grateful to you for mentioning, you know, I, I, I think, and the appreciation of all of us of, of the work of Tony Gibson and, and, and his tragic and untimely passing. And so grateful that you did that. This is actually a well-written and readable report. But in a way, it underlines perhaps the point Councillor Duncan was making in the previous agenda item about the increasing difficulty of elected members to draw meaningful conclusions on performance, when we're now actually in up to three reports on similar sort of areas in relation to tackling child poverty. And the, the bluntly, the landscape is pretty cluttered. And one wonders what can actually be done to declutter that. Because if you look at this from the, the, the member of the public perception, if you like, this is a very cluttered landscape indeed in terms of, you know, reports on the sort of same areas of activity, areas that are vitally important in terms of, for example, tackling child poverty and ensuring that we have reporting that is as accessible as possible. I still seriously wonder, and I'm not really looking for a response on that, it's just something we should be thinking about, about why do we have a council plan and a city plan as well? And all done with the best of intentions, but I think we have a very, very cluttered landscape. So that's my comment. My question's really around the previous concerns that the panel had raised. And it's alluded in page eighty five of this regarding the accessibility of fairness reports and the use of quite old statistics. Now, reading this, I think that has, there's, there's some effort being made to tackle that, that area. But I'd really be interested to learn from officers if the panel is comfortable with the direction of travel in relation to accessibility and the timeliness, shall we say, of this statistics used. The other thing is that it alludes to in that, in that part of the report, that the partnership should be in the view of the panel, using more imaginative ways to communicate the work of the, that's contained in the report and action plans. And there are actually some suggestions as to how that, that could be done. And it goes back to this whole thing of accessibility again. And at the end of the day, what we want to achieve from this, leaving aside the fact that we want elected members to be able to draw meaningful conclusions on performance and we make decisions about the way forward that take into account where we're doing well and perhaps where we're doing not so well. But I think we want to ensure that we make the reporting as accessible for the Dundee members of the public as well. Grateful for officer feedback on the panel's view as to the direction of travel in relation to accessibility of fairness reports and the use of statistics, but also ways of communicating the work that's contained in this report to the wider community.
Thanks, Fraser, and I'll defer to Andrea on the specifics here question in just a moment. But just to say, I think the panel itself have had quite extensive engagement. And I have to absolutely commend officers who frequently will come along and help demystify some of those stats and information and be interrogated and are quite open to that. And even at a granular level, I know that we've had, for example, Steve Bell coming to talk about the, the communication strategy that underpins that, how, just what you were saying about how do we distill the, the comprehensive information that's in here into a page, you know, a page or two to make it readable and understandable. So I think there's been quite a lot of effort, but sorry, Andrea, I'm conscious, I'm stealing your thunder again.
Yeah, no, I think you've covered some of it by saying we're, we're having that regular engagement so in detail. And, and there is a bit of a, a conflict from, from the panel as well because they see this level of detail and they think, oh, it's too much, but then want to drill down into even more detail. So there's, there is a, a difficult balance to try and strike. They, they were keen on the plan on, or the update on a page. So that was a two-page document that was produced for the conference. So following this meeting, we will do a similar document and that will be readily communicated to the public. And of a further discussion about what else we can do and whether that's bite-sized chunks for themes and obviously a lot of the data because the, the profile, poverty profile is a lot of in-depth data as well. So, you know, we're working with them and that, and we'll continue to do that to make it more accessible. On the data, that is a challenge, a lot of the data is retrospective data, it's national data and we've got to wait until it's published. But there is a, a group that's working across the partnership to look at poverty and inequality data to see if there is more local data that we can maybe use as interim data. And so we're looking at that at the moment. But there are nervousness about some of the data that then has to be, I suppose, ratified and it's then published nationally for us to go early can sometimes be an issue. So we will look at it. In general, we're going to be reviewing the whole performance management framework before the end of the year. So we will take on board feedback from elected members during that process about how we may be rationalizing some of the reporting, but some of it's statutory reporting as well. So we've got to produce a fairness and local child poverty action plan. So we've got to do that statutory, so we will look at that as well.
Thanks, I'm Geoff. Fraser?
Yeah, very happy, that was a very comprehensive response from Andrea for which I am grateful. And I, and I think the, you know, the willingness to look at, you know, and I understand, you know, there are some things that are statutory, you can't, you, 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 you simply do have to report on, understand that. But anything in part of that review of the performance management framework that can be done to, as I say, declutter is helpful. And, and what you said in relation to, for the public, you know, the one-page, two-page summary and presented in a, you know, very readable format is also extremely helpful. So grateful to Andrea for her response, thank you.
Thanks very much. Bailey Keenan, you're next.
Yeah, it's another couple on housing. Maybe officers could give some response. There's four hundred and fifty six households living in temporary accommodation, but there doesn't seem to be an action plan for that. Whereas there is two hundred and sixty two children living in temporary accommodation. And I think by two thousand and twenty five, that will move down to less than two hundred. And there is a hundred and nine pregnant mothers living in temporary accommodation. And I suppose the passing of time delivers on that. But, you know, I'm just wondering what's the ambition the administration's got to reduce some of these figures? I don't see what there is in relation to the number of temporary households or families living in temporary accommodation. And, you know, a factory reduction to less than two hundred children living in temporary accommodations, no good enough either, given the uncertainty of delivery of education and the like. So, you know, what's, what's the action plan? And are we seeing this coming down week by week, month by month, now that I have a plan to take care of the voids?
Thanks for the question, Kevin. So I think there's a number of things that have, I suppose, been taken forward. And you'll recall that right, sorry, just very recently, we agreed the action plan in terms of action on voids. So there's a number of different elements that are already in play in terms of taking forward comprehensive action against some of those issues. I think it's fair to say, and I think we've all acknowledged in previous committees as well, that not only do we all know what the issues are, so do officers, and they are actually driving forward with actions to deliver against them as well. Many of the factors that are in that are not just local. And I think we all will be aware that there are issues across many local authorities, but it's how we tackle them locally and what we can do locally, which is being led by officers within the department itself. I think it's also fair to say as well that it's not just about the council looking in isolation. So clearly, the work that we do with RSLs, for example, and other house providers, is really important to looking at the overall issues and some of the situations that we found, you know, these individuals find themselves in. And I know from my own contact with some of those RSLs, that they are both willing and keen to help in any way that they can. And of course, the convenor has already outlined the symposium that he'll be pulling together with housing providers across the city to make sure that we're looking at all of these issues comprehensively with an action-focused mentality. So I think there's lots of things in play to drive forward with action. So it's not just talking about these issues, it's driving forward and delivering on them. But perhaps ask for some officer input because of course this will be led ultimately. Well, Kevin, if you can hold on, I'll come back to you. If we can bring in Olga in the first instance, and then I'll come back to yourself. Olga? But you're on mute, Olga.
Thank you, thank you for the question. And in terms of planning to reduce the number of people in temporary accommodation, obviously, we recently had the plan to recover the situation in relation to void properties. And we did say in that, that that would contribute towards a reduction in the number of people in temporary accommodation. However, the overall strategic planning in relation to homelessness is carried out through the Rapid House transition plan. And that was submitted to the committee in December twenty twenty three, the, the annual update. And in that, it outlined the ambition of the council to reduce the number of people living in temporary accommodation and to reduce the number of units by a hundred and fifty. It was acknowledged, however, that there are a range of factors which are impacting on the homeless situation and that that needed to be reviewed on a, on a constant basis. And so we continued to review our approaches to homelessness, prevention of homelessness, working with partners. And that's right across the piece, whether it's in relation to domestic abuse or whether it's with RSLs. An update on the RRTP will of course come back to council because it is an annual plan that's updated to the committee annually.
Thanks, Olga. Kevin will come back to you.
Yeah, I suppose in one, I, I thought the, the, the plan to reduce the hundred and fifty temporary accommodation we wouldn't, we didn't meet last year. And so, you know, really wondering where we are going and how quick we're moving through that. Perhaps officers can give me an update out with the meeting, given that we're now a few months into the action plan. The other one John had just wanted to point out is that this paper clearly says these are Dundee statistics. They're no national statistic, they were our figures up to the thirty first of March this year. So I'm assuming that that's as sharp as we can get them. An ambition of just, you know, having that many families or that many pregnant women living in temporary accommodation is frankly no good enough, but I'll be as for the administration.
Well, Kevin, I think that's just a ridiculous comment and you know it is. So let's not start the churlish or childish behaviour. So can I just be very clear? The, the ambition, I think, for all twenty nine elected members, and I'm sure I speak with one voice on this, should be absolutely zero. We don't want anybody living in that kind of situation. So let's just be really forthright in saying that. And let's be honest about the fact that we're all absolutely laser focused on the same issues here. And can I also say in terms of some of the information and happy for officers to provide that after the meeting as well, there's also regular updating in terms of some of that work, particularly around voice through the Housing Best Value Review Group, which drills down in minute detail into some of those issues. And of course, there are, there is an opposition representative on that as well. So I think it's important that we just think about the range of information that we're doing, but more importantly, what we're doing with it. And I think what Olga outlined there is that there are key actions that we've all agreed to in previous action plans that are being driven home. And let's aim for absolute maximum in terms of what we can do. But we also have to be realistic. And I think that's one thing that you and others have said in the past, and likewise, I reflect on quite frequently. We cannot promise the earth and then not deliver on that. And I think we've got to be really honest with the public about both the scale of the work that we're doing and how focused we are on delivering on those actions as well. So I will come to, I think, Councillor Shears was next with a question on this item. Pete, over to you.
Thanks, Convenor. So my question is about the child poverty rates. We seem to have had a slight raise, I think it's one point one per cent. Whereas there seems to be a bit of a freeze in Scotland. So I was just wondering if we could get some detail, if there's been any factors identified, what's causing that raise within Dundee? And kind of using that information, is there any cross-learning going on with other councils that are perhaps, you know, drop or continue to freeze where they share a similar city profile with us?
Yeah, thanks, Pete, it's a really helpful question. And I think there's a, there's a range of different factors that I'll not go into. And obviously, we've got our kind of family comparison groups in terms of other local authorities as well. But Andrea, can I come to you? Thanks.
Yeah, so just on the data, we are not clear of a, a direct correlation of payers has gone slightly up. And so we're looking at all factors from a local perspective, from what Dundee City Council can do. I think we feel that we've done a lot to try and reduce people's costs and also to increase their income and to improve their employment opportunities because they are the key factors that help with that figure. So we're, we're doing a lot in, in that area, but we're not seeing the shift yet into an improvement. We think the twenty twenty one figure is a bit of an outlier in the data. And there is a lot of caveats that are put out into the public domain on that. So around the fact that there was a universal credit uplift and also furlough payments and, and other things like that. So that one, if you take that one out, it's still not going in the right direction. And so we are looking at that. We're now just looking, that information only came out just a couple of weeks ago. So we're now looking at our benchmark, local government benchmark comparators and just to see if they've done anything that we haven't done. And we don't think they have, but we will go out and have a look. And we are looking at improvement from other people. So through the Fairness Leadership Panel, we are looking at what other similar organisations across other cities and other councils are doing that we could perhaps pick up and lift and learn from. And we've also got links into the Joseph Roundtree Foundation and the Child Poverty Action Group. So we are linking in with all the action groups. And we've also got officers from across the different themes, looking at what other things we can do to try and learn from others as well, to try and improve. So we will be looking at that in a bit more detail over the summer period to see what else can be done. And we'll link in with the Fairness Leadership Panel on that work as well.
Thanks, Andrea. Pete, you happy with that response?
Yeah, I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And I think the final question is, Councillor McHugh, Dorothy?
And it's actually very similar to the question that Pete asked because the, the, the scorecard on children living in poverty to be reduced by half by twenty thirty, it's the targets I'm, I'm really interested in here. It's definitely. thirty, it's the targets I'm I'm really interested in here, it's definitely going in the wrong direction, um, especially if you look at the target for year three, twenty four, twenty five is to reduce it to nineteen point three percent, and we're we're standing at twenty eight point two. Is this our target or is this a national target? That's my first question. Have another wee one.
So our target is mirroring the national target, um, so we've wanted to try and mirror that going forward. So it's a local target, but it does mirror the national target, the national levels at slightly different level um from ours, so they are at a different um position nationally. Um, so yeah, we are trying to to mirror mirror that.
Um, I mean, I am concerned, as as you all will be, that that we are going in the wrong direction. Uh, and I looked at the the, this is on page one hundred and thirteen, performance scorecard, and I looked at the long long term trend column, and it seems to have a down arrow, or am I not seeing what 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 does that signify? To me, that would mean a down arrow means it's decreasing.
Andrea?
Or performance is decreasing, is that what it's telling me?
So I wonder, I've managed to get out of line with the report, so I'm just trying to.
Page thirty. Well, small page thirty, yeah.
One, one, three in the bundle.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that arrows, that arrows in the wrong direction, sorry.
It should be an up arrow.
Yeah, it should be an up arrow, because it is going in the wrong direction.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Dorothy. I think what this report lays bare, and I don't think we probably need the report to to tell us is um how significant the challenges are, and we know the impact of not just COVID and then what's happened since in terms of uh the the cost of living crisis, but, you know, let's be honest, fourteen years inflicted, um, Tory austerity has its impact as well in terms of the welfare reform agenda and what that's meant for people living in our communities. I think there's a whole series of impacts there, and it's the cumulative nature of all of that that has an impact on our communities that really worries me. And whilst I think we're doing a lot, um, and I think certainly the the charities, the organisations, the individuals that uh we engage with proactively, uh, we'd all uh echo these comments, I'm sure, in terms of the proactive nature of that work. Quite frankly, it's it's not enough to touch the size, it needs national intervention, not just local intervention, and that's a particular challenge. So, you know, let's keep pushing at that, let's keep lobbying, and let's keep campaigning to make sure that we try and turn that trend around. So thanks very much for the question, Dorothy. Um, I see no other questions on this report, so can I take this report as agreed? Thank you very much. Okay, Arlene?
Thank you. That takes us on to item six, National Care Service update, and this is for noting.
Thank you very much. Uh, hopefully, the report's self explanatory, obviously just for noting in terms of an update on the position, and there was elected member briefings uh organised as well in respect of that, um, since the last time we considered National Care Service, uh, and obviously, uh, a number of things have uh changed, I suppose, in a sense, um, and this report just provides the latest update on those discussions which are taking place between uh Scottish Government, Local Government and NHS about both the governance aspects of the proposed National Care Service and the wider social care issues with National Care Service, Scotland, Berlin, of course, uh, conversations and discussions via COSLA uh also uh continue. Um, I can see that we've got an amendment, thank you, Daniel, so I'll I'll go to Pete first, um, because he's got a question on this item, and then I'll come back to you if that's all right. So, uh, Pete, your question, please.
Thanks very much. Before I ask the question, just to pick up on your comment on the last item, I'm sure you'll all be voting Labour to get rid of the Tory government uh in a couple of weeks there. No need to respond to that, convener. But my question is about four point eight. Um, so as a party, Labour is supportive of the National Care Service, but taking um IJBS and Children and Family Services out of control of local government is something that we don't want to see, and I think as a council, we've all agreed, it's not something that is right for Dundee either. And so we'll all be making representations to our own political leaders. I'm just wondering what representations Dundee City Council are making, um, both through COSLA and as a corporate body to the Scottish Government to ensure that we do retain control of those.
Thanks for the question, Pete. You're right, I'll not respond to the first part, because it wouldn't be complimentary, but no, um, the the substantial part point that you make is one we made, obviously, when we considered this last time, I think we came to a position where broadly speaking, we're all in agreement uh on some of those issues in terms of the practicalities of delivering the National Care Service, which, again, uh, I do support, uh, so long as we get that model uh right. Um, in terms of representations, I'll defer to officers on any representation they've been making, obviously, the conversations I've been involved in are through COSLA uh and the body that represents all thirty two local authorities. So there's been a a number of different uh discussions over uh the period of time in which has elapsed, I suppose, since we last considered it as a committee. Uh, and again, it will be considered uh in due course as well. So I'll perhaps defer to Greg in the first instance, uh, and then, uh, if there are any other officers to come in, Greg?
Yeah, thanks, convener, and thanks councillor Shears. So through the different professional forums, officers will be feeding back their views. That would range from the Chief Social Work Officer, which Glenn Lloyd is your representative, Director of Finance for Robert Emmett, and for me, the Society of Local Authority Chief Executives. Um, other forums like ADES, Audrey and Paul will be represented. We are using these to push the view that we hold around local authorities having the option to decide whether or not children's services and criminals' justice should be part, but actually allowing that decision making to remain locally. So just to give you those assurance that those representations are being made.
Thanks very much, uh, Greg. Uh, Glenn, can I just check, is there anything you would wish to add to what the chief executive has said?
The the only thing I I I would add, convener, is that those conversations are regular and and routine via Social Work Scotland, the National Chief Social Work Officer Group, and through them with COSLA as well, and the council position has been said, has always been consistent with that as of 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 COSLA and as councillor Shears has just described.
Thank you very much for that. Um, again, I can see that uh councillor Lynn wants to come in, uh, and then we'll come back to the amendment in just a moment. So Ken, over to you.
Oh, just a a a brief comment with regard to something that councillor uh Shear said about IJBS being taken out of a local control. Um, I don't I don't think the intention was ever to take the 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 decision making away from a local level. I just wanted to point out that, but we're now in a situation where the there is no proposal to scrap the IJBS, but rather uh rather uh to reform them. Uh, so I I think that the the existential risk to the IJBS have been scrapped entirely has gone, and there's probably some improvements that can be made in the way that IJBS work, for example, extending the voting rights from the the councillors and NHS reps to 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 the wider group. So it was just to make that point, really, there's no question of of the the IJBS themselves being been taken away from local control. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Ken. Okay, we'll circle back. So councillor Coleman, I'll come to yourself, and if you're happy for uh uh member services to just circulate that amendment?
Yes, please do. I just, I think I've sorted my technical issues now. Can you hear me okay?
Uh, we can, yes.
Thank you, I apologise in the chamber for that earlier on, Mr. Meehan, but thank you. Yes, grateful to Committee Services for sharing the amendment. The Scottish Liberal Democrat maintains its consistent view that the National Care Service is not the way to proceed to improve care services in Scotland. Our amendment is straightforward and adds an additional recommendation that recognises that this committee supports the aid of delivery of high standard social care across the country, but believe that such services are best organised and delivered by properly funded local authorities and not by centralised quandos. That would be created by the establishment of a proposed National Care Service. As we know, the bill to establish the National Care Service has seen several delays due to concerns over the true cost of the project, estimated being of the two point two billion pounds, and what it means for local dis, that local decision making. As alluded to in four point six of this report, the initial scope of the bill has now been scaled back significantly, but the setup costs has remained significantly high, and there's a lot of money. The money has been, the money that has been and will be spent on this should be instead spent by boosting pay and conditions of frontline care staff and ensuring that conditions of service users improve. That's why social, that what social care service will be made, I therefore move my amendment back to the board. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Daniel. Yeah, we heard you loud and clear there, so thank you for that. And I can see your colleague councillor Duncan is going to second, so Craig, over to you.
Yep, uh, thanks, convener. Um, yeah, I've got really deep misgivings about the 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 wisdom of this project um to create a National Care Service. It's run into a lot of, to put it mildly, difficulty and cost. Uh, the Scottish Parliament's own Health, Social Care and Sport Committee has issued a report saying it is concerned about the Scottish Government, and I quote, inability to articulate and communicate a model of how the proposed National Care Service would operate. Moreover, the Scottish TUC General Secretary, Ross Foyer, has said that the means firmly unacceptable that at this stage Scotland's workers still have no quality on how a National Care Service will operate in practice, nor the overall cost of the project. Uh, the the Liberal Democrats have consistently said that the National Care Service model will be costly, centralising and bureaucratic. As councillor Coleman has already alluded to, the the funds spent thus far and doubtless in the future could probably be better directed towards frontline staff.
Yeah, thank you very much, and thank you for being succinct. Um, might not come as a surprise, so I I can't agree um to the proposed amendment to the report there. I think there are a couple of things that I I would certainly reflect on. First of all, um, it was part of a manifesto commitment, uh, and uh certainly, um, my party intend to deliver our manifesto commitments where we can as well. So I think it's really important uh that I just said that very clearly. There's also in response, let's remember, to an independent review of adult uh social care services, which outlines significant challenges in the Scottish social care system. So this isn't merely an idea that's come out of nowhere, it's about uh driving consistency and quality by setting that, you know, standard across uh the rest of Scotland as well. So there is an objective, there is a a clear intention there, and that doesn't mean I agree with every single aspect of uh how it might be implemented. I think we've, again, articulated and discussed this previously at committee and come to a shared view on that, but I do believe a a National Care Service constructed correctly uh can actually enhance and deliver uh the outcomes that we would like to see. So on that basis, I I will move the report as is. Um, can I ask for a second or please?
Yes, I'll second you, convener.
Thank you very much. Uh, Bailey Sawers, uh, okay, I can see no other contributions at this point, so Arlene, we will move to the vote, please.
Thanks, convener. The motion by the convener, seconded by Bailey Sawers, is to agree the report is submitted. The amendment by councillor Coleman, seconded by councillor Duncan, is as circulated. Convener?
Motion.
Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cardell.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson. We'll move on just now. Oh, oh, there's a message in the chat. Markham is motion. Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Bailey Sawers.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion, please.
Bailey Keenan.
Motion.
Councillor Crookshank.
Motion.
Councillor Finnegan.
Motion.
Councillor McHugh.
Motion.
Councillor Malone.
The motion.
Councillor Scullen.
The motion.
Councillor Shears.
The motion.
Bailey Wright.
Motion.
Bailey MacPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman.
The amendment.
Councillor Creighton.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
So that's twenty two for the motion, four for the amendment, so the motion is carried.
Okay, thank you very much, Arlene. We'll move on to the next item.
Yeah, that takes us on to item seven, Local Code of Corporate Governance. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
A few annual reports this evening, and this is in keeping with that. So this report presents the annual compliance review and an updated local code of corporate governance, uh, obviously setting out the council's continuous improvement agenda twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, with uh progress updates that can be found in the second appendix, or appendix two, uh, as I should have said. Uh, are there any particular questions or comments on this report, or can I take it as agreed? Okay, we'll take that as agreed. Thank you very much. Arlene?
Item eight, Community Wealth Building in Dundee Progress Report. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
Again, quite a a lot of substantive items on this evening's agenda, and all really important in terms of that broader agenda, particularly when we're thinking about uh economic growth and uh fairness in collaboration with one another. This report gives members an update on the progress made by the council in implementing the recommendations of the Centre for Local Economic Strategies regarding community wealth uh building itself. Uh, and you'll see some of the highlights that are included in the report, including uh the the Community Wealth Building Procurement Working Group, uh, and the work that's been done so far to encourage local contractor spend in capital programmes, which resulted in twenty four million pounds uh being spent locally, which, again, I think is to be broadly welcomed. Of course, we always want to squeeze as much as we can uh out of procurement for maximum benefit of the local economy, and the community wealth building strategy is at the core of that, uh, and officers will continue to work to see how we can maximize the opportunities that come through uh uh the various uh procurement processes that we undertake as a council. But beyond that, the reflection of this conversation with NHS colleagues, with corporate bodies like universities and college and all the other core partners is equally important, because what we want to make sure is all of the major institutions or all institutions within Dundee have that uh within their thinking, when they're thinking about procurement strategies and the approach that they take. Um, I think I've said enough, so I'll just go to uh questions, councillor Creighton. Michael, over to you.
Thank you, convener. Uh, yeah, I have a question. Um, wealth is good, uh, reading the progress and with community wealth building. Um, I see on page one hundred and ninety four, it indicates that Community Wishes approach will be launched um in June twenty four, um, and just to remind, we are at the end of June twenty four, so just kind of um wondering, uh, kind of an update on where we are with Community Wishes uh and the approach and how we're kind of progressing, and if that will be done by the end of this month.
Yeah, it's a fair question, Michael. We've got a week to go, and I can see that Rachel Thomas, our Community Wealth Building Officer, is on the call, so she will have a great answer for you, I'm sure. Rachel, over to you.
Yes, um, yeah, the the programme, the the kind of front end of the programme, which is able to take in the wishes, is now developed, and the website and things is ready to go. Um, we are intending to soft launch that towards the end of this week with um community staff. What we want to do is to make sure that the the kind of internal processes that we've built in to deal with queries works well before we go to a kind of a broader um public launch. So we will be um launching it. It was always indicated that we would have a soft launch as part of the planning um for the programme, so we'll be doing a soft launch towards the end of this weekend to next week, and then we will launch it more broadly, probably after the election, just so after, so so kind of in a week and a bit's time.
Thanks, Rachel. You happy with that, Michael?
Yeah, thanks, Rachel, and yeah, all good luck and fingers crossed uh for launch.
Hey, thank you for the question. Uh, councillor Rome next, Stephen.
Thanks, Shear. No, I just didn't want to let the opportunity pass, just uh to pass comment of my own on this report, which is absolutely excellent, as you've previously said, convener, um, particularly the figures on comparable um local spend, as you've said, comparing us with other local authorities and and the wider area is really excellent. And I know from um previous updates to the inclusive economic growth uh group from Rachel Thomas, that specific projects such as the East End Community Campus is looking at even better still in terms of those figures. So just to note that, I think we've done some really good work, and and hopefully those uh kind of things continue. Uh, and also just to pay tribute to the work that's been done, uh, as the bullet point mentions, by our anchor partners, but also by the loving, uh, the Dundee Living Wage Group, uh, and my colleagues have been up before me, and the permanent officers who've done everything to make that happen. Uh, it's important that we continue to engage, uh, and then can you continue to make sure that as many anchor partners as possible and as many businesses uh pay the living wage, uh, because that gets more wealth around in the local communities. So just to note that, please, convener, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for those comments. Um, I, oh, no, sorry, councillor Short. Flynn, over to you.
Thank you, uh, convener. Um, as you know, you gave me a job to do, sport, culture and history. Uh, last night, we had the sport, we had the culture, but unfortunately, we didn't get the history. Um, but I joined thousands of Dondonians um at Riverside and uh was able to say thank you to the organisers, because it wasn't something we could put on.[1784.23] But I joined thousands of Dondonians at Riverside and was able to say thank you to the organisers because it wasn't something we could put on. We brought, there was a motion came to committee, but there was something already, the wheels in motion. But that influence that the council can have over people within the city really was second to none. So it was local staff, it was local bars, it was local beers from 71 brewing and it was local people having a wonderful time. And it really was an important event and that whole thing about anchors, it's not just about the big anchors like the universities, colleges, et cetera. It's also about those individual businesses that support everybody from day to day. So a big thank you to all the sponsors and the supporters and everybody who made last night a really special thing and very much a Dundee thing. And that even includes our friends at DC Thompson's, who were also brilliant at covering it right across the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lyn, you're right, it's about everybody who can have an impact in terms of community wealth building, so certainly agree with those comments. And I think that was the last comment, so can I take this report as agreed? Thank you very much. Can I perhaps suggest that we have a quick comfort break? I'm very conscious it's been nearly two hours and some folk might well take the opportunity to stretch their legs or refill their coffee cup. So can I suggest that we reconvene in, let's say, nine minutes? So it's a nice even 10 to 7 and I will see you then. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Kinning, that is ten two, so we will crack on with the agenda. In the hope that Arlene's back, actually, I should have checked that first, isn't it, Arlene? Are you here?
I am, I'm here, yes, thank you.
Excellent, but that's all that matters.
Okay, so that takes us on to item nine, customer services and I T school clothing grants, and you have this for approval.
And thanks very much. And I think it's it's, you know, quite in keeping with some of the uh issues that we've been discussing tonight in terms of poverty fairness. Uh and obviously alleviating as much of that uh as possible. And the clothing grant going up supports a significant number of pupils and their families. And I think we'll broadly uh welcome that. Uh and of course, this comes on the back of uh an inflationary uplift by Scottish coming of nine hundred thousand uh on last year's funding as well, so certainly to be welcomed. And of course, whilst it might uh seem small in terms of that five pound extra per pupil, uh we know that that matters to families uh and that I'm sure will be well received, as I said. Uh I can see that there's one question, so Fraser, I'll come straight to you.
Right, thanks, convenor, my uh I I would first of all make the point, our group welcomes the proposed uplift in 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 school clothing grants. I'm sure we all do. At three point one, the report indicates that there are currently five thousand eight hundred and eighteen eligible pupils. And the number of pupils um quote varies from year to year. And I'm just really wondering if officers can indicate what the figure has been over the past five years? What the projection, you know, the direction of travel is in terms of numbers of eligible pupils? Uh specifically, I'm wondering what effect the cost of living crisis has had on the number of eligible pupils? And I'm just really wondering if officers could give some information in that respect.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Fraser. I'm not sure if we'll have all the information at hand, but I'm I will certainly endeavor to obtain it if we can. And Jackie, are you perhaps best placed, Jackie Capel, uh to give an initial response on that in terms of the figures?
Yeah, thanks, convenor. Thank you, um Bailey McPherson for the question. Um based on, you'll remember previous uh reports that have come to committee around council tax uh benefit take up campaigns. So based on those campaigns, we have seen an increase in the number of C T R recipients, which is one of the eligible criteria for um school clothing grants. So I don't have all the figures for the past five years to hand, but we can certainly after this meeting get them to you um and give you that. But based on on those previous reports, the trajectory is that it's increasing year on year.
Uh that's very helpful, Jackie. The the purpose of the question is really around ensuring that nobody frankly is missing out. Um because quite clearly, logic would tell me that the number should be increasing during the very challenging cost of living crisis that has affected so many families in the city. And that gives me that reassurance. But i- if you're able to provide uh the actual stats over the past um five years, that'd be much appreciated. But grateful for the response, Jackie, thank you.
Yeah.
Question, thanks for the response. Uh I don't think there's any others on this item, so can I take this as agreed? Great, thank you very much, Arlene.
Item ten, I T security for laptops, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
Uh I think it's fairly self explanatory, the current security system is approaching the end of the contract. Any questions or comments on this one? Nope, can I take this item as agreed then, please? Thank you very much, okay, move on again, Arlene.
Item eleven, procurement of attainment and progress tracking software, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much. Um I can see that Bailey McPherson's got an amendment, so I'll come to that in just a moment. Um just to say in terms of the report, obviously it's seeking approval uh to commence procurement exercise for the software that's detailed in the report. The contract is anticipated to be three years in length with the option uh to extend it uh for a further period. And is it expected to cost in the region of two hundred and sixty thousand over that three year period? Uh I will come to, unless there are any other questions, I'll just go straight to Bailey McPherson and his amendment. Oh no, there's a question. Um so Bailey McPherson, just give me one moment and I'll bring in councillor Flynn for a question on the report.
Sorry, convenor, for being jumping into the last minute there. I've just got a quick, quick question with regards to four point nine and the community benefits will be added to the I O T for the community wish list for the contractor. Is there a set value where we're actually looking for the community benefits to be added? On any particular tender or is it on every tender we're gonna do from now on?
Uh thanks for the question, um Mark. Can I just check if Rachel is still on the call? No, she is not. Uh can I perhaps come to you to pick that point up?
We're happy to get an email, convenor, it's okay.
Okay, thanks very much. I think we'll we'll know that question follow up uh with some further information. Obviously, the the report that went uh forward to committee a number of months ago, um will have some further information, but we'll make sure that's circulated, Mark, so thanks for the question. Uh okay, notwithstanding that point, we'll come back to yourself, Bailey McPherson, for your amendment and if you're happy for it to be circulated.
Yep, that's that's fine, convenor. Hopefully, this will be deemed uncontroversial in terms of the fact that a fortnight ago, we agreed to an amendment Liberal Democrat Group had in relation to um other uh previous tenders, where the tender uh was likely to be in excess of two hundred thousand pounds. We've taken the view and we agree that the substantive point about this will be uh in relation to when the scheme of delegation review comes forward. Because we have the view that um that uh uh the the position we take in terms of procurement is that in terms of transparency, that the final decision should rest with elected members at a lower level than officers have been recommending. I think they're recommending half a million and we've made the point that we think a lower limit, not an insubstantial amount, two hundred thousand pounds. And that uh where that is the case, uh that the um uh the director is asked to bring back a report to committee with recommendations relative to the contract award. Now, if we're going to be consistent with the tender due, and I would hope that committee would agree to that. And as I say, we fully understand that the um substantive issue, they'll no not, they shouldn't long term, uh uh hopefully, in relation to the uh standing orders review for us to continually raise this. But until that happens, we feel we have to, hence the amendment tonight, convenor.
Okay, thanks very much, uh Fraser. I'll come to councillor Crichton to second, Michael.
Thank you, um Kavir. Um I'd like to formally second um Bailey McPherson. Um given committee's agreement two weeks ago, um this is just really seeking um to be consistent with what we decided. Um my whole committee will um support our group's amendment. Um and I don't think we're asking for anything too controversial here. So I agree with everything Billy McPherson has just said, I don't need to say any more, I don't think.
Thanks uh very much for that. I I think you're right in terms of obviously the discussion we had quite recently. I think I wasn't necessarily minded um to to go down this route on this one, I think. Uh just in terms of the overall value and the nature of what's been asked for it. I mean, it's equivalent of eighty six thousand pounds uh per year in terms of the overall cost. And it does say in terms of that material deviation, if there is any, to come back to a committee. I think I'm quite reassured with the contents of this report, actually. I think I I don't have any particular concerns in that regard. I don't think the value is is significant. And of course, there is that built in mechanism for coming back. So if I'm being honest, I think I'd probably be minded to proceed on the basis of what's contained in the report and the nature of of what we're asking for in terms of the approval this evening. So I think on that basis, I will be recommending that we just take the report, uh as I say, eighty six thousand pounds per annum uh in terms of the value of that contract as well. And I think it would be um incumbent upon us to kind of get on with implementing that that system. So I'm I'm gonna recommend that we actually move the report as is, so I would uh move that as the motion. Uh do I have a seconder? Bailey Sawyers, you are off mute, don't worry.
Yes, I'll second you.
Thank you very much.
There's chat, but.
Yeah, no, it's all right. I saw you you looking before you could get there. So um I think on that basis, I'll just suggest that we move to the vote um and uh proceed on that basis. So, Arlene.
Thanks, convenor. The motion by the convenor, seconded by Bailey Sawyers, is to agree the report is submitted. The amendment by Bailey McPherson, seconded by councillor Crichton, is as circulated. Convenor.
Motion.
Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Lord Provost.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rowan.
Motion.
Bailey Sawyers.
Listen.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Crookshank.
Amendment.
Councillor Finnegan.
Maintenance.
Councillor McHugh.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
Amendment.
Councillor Scullen.
The amendment.
Councillor Shears.
The amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Crichton.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
So that's fourteen for the motion, eleven for the amendment, so the motion is carried.
Very much, Arlene, we'll move on.
That takes us on to item twelve, procurement of rental service and maintenance of gym equipment, managed service, and this is for approval.
Just before I speak to this item, can I ask all colleagues, uh once we finish the final item, if you can stay on, I've just got something I I would like to say at the end of committee, uh and hopefully you can indulge me in that. Uh on this specific item, again, I think it's hopefully self explanatory in terms of what you're being asked to approve. Uh so I'll not say any more than that. Are there any questions or comments on this particular item? No, okay, we'll take that as agreed, thank you very much, Arlene.
Item thirteen, establishment of recess subcommittee, the committee's instructions are requested.
It's a fairly standard item for this time of year, so hopefully everybody is content with the uh proposed outline contained within this. So can I take this as agreed? Right, thank you very much. Well, thank you also for your indulgence. Um so I thought it was really important for me to take the opportunity uh to recognise uh one of the very familiar faces that I think we've dealt with over the years in various forms, which is of course, of course, is Jackie Capel. So Jackie retires on Friday. Uh that's following uh holding her current post as head of customer service and I T for nearly four years. But of course, we all know Jackie from posts of old as well, thirty six years. I'm sure you won't appreciate me in pointing that out, uh Jackie, so apologies, but thirty six years in public service uh and a really positive track record. And I think your engagement with all elected members across the political spectrum over many of those years uh is something that we all uh have valued and appreciated. Uh of course, you've uh worked across a number of different areas. You worked in Tayside Regional Council, uh you worked on the implementation of council tax, probably one of your le- least popular elements of work, and then obviously on to Dundee City Council at reorganisation as well. But I know that you've been involved in a lot of work, not just locally, but in fact nationally as well. And you've had a huge impact over those thirty six years and have been not only a familiar face that we could rely upon, who was knowledgeable, understanding, uh and that we could appreciate the information that was given to us, uh but a friendly face, which I think is equally is important as well. And you always took it in good humour uh and in your stead when you were asked questions or um uh put on the spot on occasion as well. And it's fair to say that you will be missed. I think I speak for everybody when I say that. You'll be hard uh to follow uh in terms of the work that you've been undertaking. But we appreciate that you're going on to bigger and better things. And I know that you'll spend your Monday evenings watching the online meetings, um because we know how much you enjoy that. But of course, you also have your two granddaughters to look after as well. So we wish you well in your retirement um and a long and healthy retirement uh as well. Um I am happy for any other elected members to come in, so I will come to uh Bailey McPherson first, Fraser.
Thanks indeed, convenor. Um I I have to say that I've known Jackie for virtually all of these thirty six years. And uh and I have to say, doesn't she look well on the thirty six years? She just doesn't look like someone who's about to retire. Um I I have to say, I know Jackie not just from uh being on the council. And if I go back long enough ago, when she worked for Tayside Regional Council, some of us worked for Dundee District Council. And um that that's it does seem like a very long time ago. But I've also known Jackie and other guys uh in the eye until I retired from it. Um a little bit earlier than Jackie, I worked for the Institute of Revenue, Us Rating and Valuation for uh around twenty years. And Jackie made an absolutely excellent contribution to the activities of the I R R V in 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 uh the professional sense. Uh Jackie is held in the greatest of uh respect and regard across local government, right across Scotland. She's made an uh excellent contributions to the institute's forum over the years. And uh she will absolutely definitely be missed in that wider professional capacity as well as in relation to the hard work that she's put in over such a large number of years with uh both the regional council and for the bulk of her career with Dundee City Council. So Jackie, wishing you all the very, very best for a long and happy retirement is most certainly well deserved. Thank you, convenor.
Thanks very much, Fraser. Kevin.
Trying to get myself off mute. Jackie, just uh obviously I'd like to wish you well. Uh Fraser tells me to do, you started as a sixteen year old, so I'll not do any more than give away your age at that. Uh but I really wish you well in your retirement. I thought that over the last few months, it might have been getting a bit easier for you, given that the efforts that yourself and your team put in over the Covid period with the amount of grants uh that were being applied for across the council was just an enormous task and handled really well by yourself and your team uh at that time on behalf of the city council. Uh you know, I know that that would have been a pretty difficult time because you'd have been dealing with pretty high rate members of the public uh that when the government come out and say something and it turns out that individual's not getting any money, uh then they get a wee bit irritated. So you, on behalf of Dundee, you've dealt with uh uh some of the most difficult issues for people. And in doubt, we some of the most difficult issues in people's greatest time of need as well. So that's uh to your to your credit. I believe that uh the members of your staff uh really respect you as well and will obviously be sad to see you go. Uh they thought that you were gonna be the boss for a few years yet, but uh you've decided you're moving on and I wish you well in that, as they do. Uh so Jackie, I wish you well, bye.
Thanks very much, Kevin. Uh Dorothy? Oh, you're on mute, Dorothy.
Sorry, um I've only known Jackie for the last two years. But as a new councillor, I have to say I found her very approachable, um friendly, fully professional and so helpful. And she she's helped me on a number of occasions and very easy to deal with. Um and that was a bonus for me. Um so thank you, Jackie, for your support, much appreciated, and I wish you well.
Thank you very much, Dorothy. Jackie, I wouldn't uh would be remiss of me not to allow you to respond if you so wish, but of course you don't have to.
Thank you. I'm uh sitting here blushing um at all these lovely comments, so so thank you very much. But um I will keep this um short and sweet. Um but working here in Dundee for the past thirty odd years has been both a privilege and a pleasure. Um uh as uh Bailey Keenan mentioned, sometimes working on the front line, it's not always easy. But when you get that one customer, that one citizen that you've made a difference for, it makes it all feel um worthwhile. So I am truly grateful for all the support that I've received um and for the friendships that I've gained over the past thirty odd years. Um I'm looking forward to this next chapter. I've never been that mum at the school gates, so um I'm gonna be the granny at the school gates. And I actually can't wait to do it now. So thank you all very, very much.
So good, thank you, Jackie, and all the best with your uh with your retirement. Thank you all very much for your indulgence and your kind words for Jackie as well. You are now free to go, have a wonderful summer. If I don't speak to you beforehand, I'm.